This time, we're going to review the discussion of city attorney applications. Mr. Chisholm?
You have in your packet a copy of five submissions that we received. First one is Cobb &amp; Cole. The second one is Corey, Sweet, McKinnon, and Simpson. Third one is Law Office of Fishback Dominic. Fourth one is Marcia Segal George. The fifth one is Sabatini Law Firm. And you have a copy of their submissions. And I would suggest you select one or two that you would like to interview and give us that instruction, and we'll move forward to set meetings up with you.
Do you have any questions from the commissioners up here? Commissioner McCool?
Thank you. And I understand the suggestion in the interest of saving time or whatever, but I would suggest that we interview all of them because I have looked at all of them and have questions regarding suites of service and questions that I have for all of them that might be germane to the whole picture, whether it be regarding their experience, regarding their -- the attorneys they have, regarding the experience. I mean, I know what is on here, but we have, you know, we have very unique issues here. And I just don't want to -- I don't want to kick anyone out before we've had a chance to actually interview them. I mean, if that's done on our own time, let me know that. But if we have a period of time in which to interview them all, then I think that that should be done.
Thank you, Commissioner Burbank, and then Commissioner Jody Lee.
As a matter of fiduciary prudence, I would -- I want to go with Marcia. As Commissioner McCool pointed out, there's a lot of unique things going on, there are a lot of balls in the air. She's handling them now. It's no time to be changing horses in Midstream. Thank you.
Commissioner Jody Lee, and then Commissioner McCool?
Well, I agree with both my fellow commissioners. There's a lot of stuff going on. I personally have already talked to three of them, so I don't -- however we're going to proceed with this, I've already reached out and, you know, we've been talking about this for several months now, so I've already reached out and spoke with three of the applicants, so I'm going to reach out to the other two, but I don't know if we're going to be doing that. We're going to have them all here, I mean, because supposedly this is supposed to be on the agenda for the next meeting, so that means we got a couple of weeks or, what, a week till next Monday to figure this out, or it gets kicked down the road again. But, like I said, I've already reached out on my own time and spoke to three of the five, so.
Mr. Chisholm, just to reiterate what Commissioner Jody Lee said, are we going to be doing this here for the next commission meeting? I just want to --
It's on the agenda for your next commission meeting.
Okay. So are you having us trying to pick just two? Because I think --
What I would suggest is that you -- I suggested two. It might be three. It could be five. It's, you know, five is not, you know, it's not abnormal to do that. But you need to talk to them. And what I would suggest is that we go ahead and have individual meetings with each of you on a certain day for all of these applicants or whoever you suggest to bring forward, and then be prepared to move on the one, the applicant that you like the best.
Are we going to allow the public to participate in any of the questioning or have questions on that day?
At the point that you have selected, decided which one you're going to entertain at the meeting, that's when you would get the public comment.
Thank you, Mr. Chisholm. Commissioner McCool, and then Vice Mayor Bradford.
Yeah, to which I would say state also, I believe that that is a wonderful idea, having all of them address not only the commission but the public, because we talk about having experience and what we've had here. I mean, you know, we had, we could say the same of, you know, past people that have gone on too, you know, that we have experienced. We're always, we're an evolving city. That doesn't, you know, I'm just going to leave it at that. We're an evolving city, so I think that that is a good idea, that we allow them time to address the public in the city. It's our charter officer. We forget that it's not just attorney, but it's our charter officer also, and they might want to speak to the public. And it was my understanding not to speak to anybody until we were given the okay to -- so if I misunderstood that, but I would like for our public to be able to have input also. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Bradford?
This is where it's difficult, because we haven't even gotten together really and said, "This is what we want." And when you look back at, I'm going to say, my top three, you're looking at prices ranging from $150 an hour, $250 an hour, $300 an hour. You know, prices aren't, they're not going down, they're going up. What's budgeted? What are we looking for? What do we expect out of this? I mean, are we looking to take your contract back up over $1 million? Are we looking to take a contract up over $1.5 million with everything involved? That's what these new firms are looking at. And I don't know if we set a precedence by already having an attorney that we're paying $1 million, but it seems like, you know, a few of these are coming in well over, it'll be well over $1 million for us to hire a new attorney firm. So I think we really need to figure out exactly what we're looking for, what is expected. And I like the idea of having, you know, the input from the residents like we did prior. And we need to have certain requirements for that city attorney that states they do have governmental experience, they do have experience as being an attorney. With our city evolving the way it is, it's critical that we have a city attorney that, one, is familiar with Deltona, two, is familiar with government law, is familiar with negotiations and all the wonderful things that are going on with what we have right now. We have a lot of development, so there's going to be a lot of documents and transactions and items coming through that we need vast experience. I can't just make a decision based on these, because if I do, I already have in my head what I want, and I just want to make sure that I'm making the right decision myself. That's it.
Commissioner Jody Lee, and then Commissioner McCool?
I did a little bit of math, looking at everybody's contract and what everybody's offering. And right here, on my math, I think everybody got an email today, but the breakdown from according to their contract per 40 hours a week, I'll tell you now, so everybody can hear it, Cobb &amp; Cole is at $1.7 million. Scott Simpson is at $400, and this is at, this is an estimate at 40 hours a week, 52 weeks a year. Cobb &amp; Cole, for what their contract states, is at $1.7 million a year. Simpson is at $416,000 per year. Fishback is at $988,000 per year. Marcia Segal George is at $312,000 per year, and Sabatini Law Firm is at $592,000 per year. So, I mean, that's, you look at some of them numbers, I mean, we're going from everywhere from $300,000 to $1.7 million.
And that's not them covering everything?
That's not, that's just what their contract states for a paralegal, for the lawyer. And we all, the worst part is, we all know we're not going to get the 40 hours a week. We might get billed for it, but we're not going to get it. This is the problem we've had. This is why I made the motion before. I want to get the best bang for our buck. I think we were getting overbilled prior, but that's just my opinion. So that's why I made the motion before, to get rid of the law firm that we had previous. So, you know, that falls on my head, and I'm fine with it, but I think we need to get more bang for our buck.
Can you give Mr. Commissioner? Mr. Chisholm, to the point of the Vice Mayor and to Commissioner Jody Lee, do we have to have that, do we have to literally vote on something like this right now, or can we not try to get more law firms to come in?
No. I can do whatever you'd like. It's just a matter of scheduling. If you want, I can schedule all of them to come in, and then they'll all come back for your meeting on the following week to, you know, to --
Because they have excellent points. I mean, I have, I have a lot of concerns with some of these, you know, things like conflict of interest. What happens if our city gets in a dispute with another city that's in the same county, and one of those cities happens to be one of the people that they represent? I'm sure it's not something that's going to happen every day, but, and then we also have, as the Vice Mayor said, some of the things that we want in the new law firm. And just with five, five that we received, I just don't know if we have a, that's just my thought, but I'll let Commissioner McCool and then Commissioner Vila Vasquez.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would have us reminded also, too, it is not necessarily the hourly rate as much as it is, what gets done within a prescribed period of time. Because we had a budget set for the last, I don't know how many years, that we superseded by more than double, right, based on the amount of billing hours. We also have a thing called proactivity, whereas we have cost avoidance. And cost avoidance will also help mitigate some of these costs. There's something I've been harping on now for as long as it's been up, six months, talking about the pass-through ordinance that still hasn't been presented through us. One of our largest, one of our largest bills is for land and development. That is, we have attorney's fees for that, that we work on land and development, okay? And over the last few years, we've not had an ordinance in place that allows these pass-through legal fees, whereas a developer is taking responsibility for some of the legal work that is done also. We've asked that. Ordinance still not come back through. Has it come back through? Am I, did I blackout? Did that come back through yet? We passed the other ordinance, the companion ordinance with it, but it's not come back. So it's proactivity when we're talking about what your legal firm is. And as much crap as we get into, or as much as we've settled here, as much as we get into with contract law, tort law, as much as we get into with developer issues, as little land and as much as we get through with land development, I want us to talk about everything that we get with an attorney. So I don't want anything ruled out. I don't want us to be guilty of contempt prior to investigation until we have thoroughly vetted or dismissed every single attorney on here, and they've had a chance to address. I don't want us to, any of us, to have in mind, oh, my mind's made up, before we hear everything presented to us. Because somebody might charge a certain per hour, but what are you getting for, what are you getting for that money? How much work has to be done? And then, how much consultancy is going to get farmed out also? It's something that we need to think about. These are all points that can be addressed by the attorneys themselves, but if you don't hear from them, I think that we are shortchanging, again, our residents. If the residents have no input and their concerns, have we heard any of the resident concerned? After all, again, it's a charter officer that we're talking about. We're not talking about just a legal team. It's a charter officer. Are the residents getting their input this time? And those are the questions that we need to ask us. And so I think that it is only fair to not only the attorneys, but the public and to our city, to allow everybody to come and vote on it at that time. We can't make our mind up. I mean, I know that we've had time, but we've not followed all the process, and that's one of my fundamental issues with not presenting everyone to the public and to the commission. Thank you.
Commissioner Vila Vasquez?
Thank you, Mayor. So I don't agree with having more applications. I think we have enough right here that we can work with and pick somebody from them. And out of all these applications, they have to have a knowledge of what's going on in the city of Deltona, and we know there's a lot going on in the city of Deltona. We have a lot of pending projects. We have a lot of, a lot of things going on in the city of Deltona, and these people coming in, these new lawyers or whatever, are going to be starting from scratch to understand and learn of what's going on in the city. Absolutely, residents' input is a must, and I don't know, you know, if we open this up, how much longer do we have before we select a new lawyer? And then, funding. I mean, I hear a lot about what's going on here in funding, but you know what? That was one of the biggest complaints, of how much we were paying the law firm that, you know, was voted to get, to leave. So I, you know, I would, you know, would like to interview one or two of these lawyers that are here, the applications. But again, I don't, goes back to the same issue with the city manager. I don't want to start from scratch. We have too many things pending. I've been here four years, and I have not accomplished anything, at least in my district, because we seem to be changing all the time. So just want to keep that in mind.
Commissioner Jody Lee?
Now, being one of the new people on the commission, you know, I'm sitting here, I respect everybody for all their opinions, all the things they say, but the one thing that, if you'd paid a notice, I made this motion to get rid of the city attorneys a couple of months ago. And here we are, a couple of months later. You know what we've accomplished? Absolutely nothing. We're talking about, oh, let's make another meeting so people can talk. Well, why didn't we do that for the last two months? I mean, we're just, we, we are so famous for kicking the can down the road and just paying off every lawsuit in the world that would so and so's us. That's what we're talking about now. Well, let's interview this, let's interview that. Why haven't none of this been done in the last couple of months? I mean, we could have all reached out on our own time. I know everybody's got lives, too. I know I'm busy doing stuff, too, but we all could have reached out all this time. I talked to three of the five. I found time. I mean, find time. I mean, even some of the residents. I don't know if any of them have, but the residents have had us list for a month now, too. Some of the residents, we got some smart residents. I mean, not everybody just sits around and just does nothing. They could have been calling people and asking questions, too, because these attorneys, there's, there's certain residents that will get answers. I mean, not all, they might get a cold shoulder, but there's certain residents, if they call the attorney and ask him questions, I'm willing to bet these attorneys will answer their questions. Maybe not all of them, but some of them. But here we are again. We're two months after the motion of removing the law firm that's handling the city, and here we are talking about pushing it farther off. That's why when I made that motion, it was set for 90 days. And here we are talking about pushing it farther into the future. That's, that's all.
Commissioner McCool?
And to that point, I think that what was asked is being done, that the meeting is, we can't vote on a workshop night anyways. We have to vote at a commission meeting anyways. The public has one week, right? We have a week. I think that all of us have done our homework as far as resourcing the actual attorneys. The part that I'm talking about is the due process with the public. And we've not formally introduced it to the public until the next agenda. So, you know, again, I want us to think about cost avoidance. We've been embattled in a lot of lawsuits, a lot of things that should have been proactively done over the last 25 years that have not been done. And if we are so busy working in our business, we don't have time to work on our business. And I mean that if we are busy fighting fires all the time, we're not doing anything proactive for the city. We're not actively planning for the city. That's where I want us to be, no matter who we choose, is that we have enough help, that we're handling the lawsuits, the litigation currently at hand, and that we are proactively planning for the future also. And a lot of the stuff has been said about, oh, the historical knowledge that we have, the legacy knowledge that we have, we don't want to change horses again. I mean, come on, we've adjusted pretty well to changing horses. I think that we're past all of that. So maybe a set of fresh eyes on our cases or on our vision could actually help, because, you know, here we are, we're still getting sued for stupid stuff, you know? So I just don't want us to be dismissive. That's it. Not trying to kick the can down the road. I know we want to do stuff, but, you know, when we don't include the public, it makes us look bad. We're going to make up our minds here. We make up our minds for our public, but we're going to look bad. It's another week, and due diligence should be done.
Vice Mayor Bradford, and then Commissioner Vila Vasquez?
All right. So let's narrow it down tonight. I personally say we pick two or three. That gives you a chance to, you know, possibly set some phone interviews up with us. I can tell you personally, looking at a few of these, I don't know if you guys can hear me, like, you know, I'll just read one, you know, where I'm reading through it. You know, "Oh yeah, I can do this, but I recommend they go through the ethics on commission." Item two, workers' comp. "Yeah, I have some experience worth this. However, working sock, compensation claims are covered by insurance and handled by insurance counsel." These are not things I want to hear. What I want to hear is, I want a firm that I can go to, I would love to be able to walk right up those stairs and say, "Hey, can you give me this answer?" A phone call away, "Hey, I've got a question. A resident's asking me this." That's what I've run into over six years. I've ran into, "Hey, I've got a question for you. Can you give me a quick answer?" Because you know what? They're waiting on that answer. I have residents who are expecting those answers. Not, "Well, you know what? That's a workers' comp. You have insurance for that. You know what? That's the Ethics Board. Go to them." "Oh, you know what? I have to get that from another attorney and get that from that attorney to get that from you, but we'll get those numbers and bills together for you so you can get that answer." No! I don't want that. And I know I've been told both ways. Well, if you get a firm, you get experience X, Y, Z, P, D, Q, but then if it goes here, you don't have that, and we don't have that hands-on experience. We don't have that person we can call all the time. Every phone call you make, click, click, that clock starts. You're getting charged by the minute to answer these questions, and if they don't have the answer, they're going to another firm that they're going to pick up the phone and they're going to start the clock. Then we're getting charged for that attorney's time, that attorney's time, and possibly that attorney's time. That's concerning to me. That's where we go from having a bill here to a bill up here, and all I wanted was a stinking question answered. So for the city of Deltona, in a size of over 100,000 now, we need to have somebody that we can get answers from, we can go to, we can sit down with, and I don't have to jump through hoops to speak to. So when I read through these, I was kind of like, oh, well, I'm never going to get through to this person. It's not going to be a phone call away. This firm's great, but I'm not spending $2 million for it. This person's great, but they don't even have enough experience to say they got government experience. So these are all fine and dandy, but let's narrow it down. That's what a workshop's for. A workshop's to say, this is what I want, this is what I don't want. This firm offers this, let's move this person on to the next, where we then can really delve in. City manager sets up appointments for us to come in, meet with these people, do an interview, and then make a final, woo-hoo, you're it. But you're right, sitting up here going back and forth, we're getting absolutely flipping nowhere. So let's narrow it down. Let's work together. Let's pick out our top three, and then let's narrow it down from that. Anybody want my top three? I'll give it to you right now.
Go for it.
Corey, Sweet, McKinnon, Simpson. Law Office of Fishback Dominic, and Marcia Segal George. Those are my top three. Anybody else have top threes? Let's bring them together.
Commissioner Burbank, and then Commissioner Jody Lee.
I believe what Commissioner Bradford just described was a very expensive learning curve. I only have a top one, and I want Marcia. Thank you.
Commissioner Jody Lee?
I take my, I take my top three, if I can even find it any time. Cole, Sabatini, and Marcia.
Commissioner Vila Vasquez?
Corey, Marcia, and Cole.
Commissioner Codwell?
And I'm at Fishback, Sabatini, and Corey, Sweet, McKinnon, and Simpson.
Oh, Commissioner Vila Vasquez?
Yes. Now, the order that I gave was not the preference that I want.
I think we all did the same.
Okay.
But just for the record, Commissioner Vila Vasquez wants to make sure it's not, Mr. Chisholm, the order that she gave the names, or it's not how she prefers them. Same as myself, and I'm pretty, I don't know if the other commissioners are the same.
Yes, sir. I did. I had four for Cobb &amp; Cole. You got it?
Four for Cobb &amp; Cole.
Three for Simpson, Corey, Sweet, McKinnon, Simpson. Correct. Four for Fishback Dominic. Correct. I believe seven for Marcia. I have six. Or six? Yep, I did the extra line, sorry. And two for Sabatini. Correct. But could you say that again, please? So four for Cobb &amp; Cole. Three for Corey, Sweet, McKinnon, and Simpson. Four for Fishback Dominic. Six for Marcia Segal George. And two for Sabatini Law Firm.
So it looks like it's Cole, Cobb, Fishback Dominic, and Marcia would be the top three, if you just do three.
So can we set up, what do we want to do from here? Sorry? What do we do from here? Because we've already got our next meeting set up, so do we want to do like a?
Mr. Chisholm, are you going to set up appointments and meetings with the three law firms for each of us?
Yeah, we're trying to do, this week, or is, are you all available this week?
I think we can all make ourselves available this week.
Except for Wednesday, Mr. Chisholm. I believe some of us have an ethics class at Stetson this week.
And I have a Friday ethics class. Is it Wednesday or Friday?
I'm available anytime except from between the ninth and the eighth and the fifteenth. I'll be out of the country, so.
Okay, so everybody's available next week, except for Wednesday, maybe?
Why would we not independently make appointments and do our due diligence on our schedule to make appointments with your top three? It's like trying to herd cats. Just make your appointment, make the commitment to go to the top three and do it between now and the next meeting.
I agree.
Done.
Do it on your own. Call them and see if they can set it up.
I like that.
It'd be a lot easier.
Can Sandy take care of that? And then the top three present, our top three present?
Hold on, guys. Let's not talk over each other. Commissioner Vasquez, and then Commissioner McCool.
Thank you.
Mr. Chisholm, I'm not sure that you and I both said the same dates. That ethics classes this week.
Point of order, Commissioner Burbank?
This week.
Commissioner Burbank?
Sir.
I don't think you could hear them. Can Sandy set up the appointments for us?
We can set up appointments for you, yes.
Okay, thank you. And also, I'm sorry. So when is it going to be available for the residents?
It'd be at the, at the meeting on, you know, the following meeting, next Monday. If you want, you know, we can do something before the meeting to, you know, to have them available.
Sandwiches?
Yeah, sure.
And juice? And cookies?
Commissioner McCool, then Commissioner Burbank, and then we'll go back to Vice Mayor Bradford.
And I was just stating again that we are, all independents, to, yeah, our executives can make, or the executive assistants make appointments for us, but so that we're not trying to juggle schedules, we can all independently make our own appointments with them. And then that was my suggestion also. Have the residents be, have them here, right, an hour and a half before the meeting, say 5:00 PM. Have the attorneys of record here.
Yeah.
And to meet with the public. And part of the issue with that -- And to meet with the public, and part of the issue with that is there are a lot of people, residents, that work until 5:00. We need to be cognizant of that also. So, between 5:00 and 6:30 before the meeting starts. And I'm sure that the residents could be encouraged to call or ask questions of the attorney also. These are your charter officers, and I'm interested to hear, I'm hoping we have public comment this evening on this as well, so... The top three, right?
Vice Mayor Bradford.
This is tough, because I agree and I disagree. I agree we want to have public participation as a part of it, but I don't know that doing it at 5:00 on a Monday before that meeting is the right time. One, we have people who work. Two, you know, generally something like that, like, we've had things where the commissioners weren't there, so the public was free to come and meet and didn't feel intimidation. But then that would mean calling them in on a weekend, and that would also be the time where people do not work. So, this is a tough one, and it's, I guess my question is, why are we like cramming it all of a sudden that it, oh my God, it has to be done by Monday? So, I get the rush, I get it, but here you're talking, this is a charter officer, but yet we're saying they have an hour and a half before the next meeting to do this process, and then we're only hitting people who are able to be here at 5:00 on that time zone. So, it's like we're all up here kind of contradicting ourselves that, "Oh yeah, we want to do it fast, but we want to include this, and we want to do that." That doesn't work together.
What, why don't we, if you want to, we can do it on a Saturday when everybody's available.
I mean, could we get the attorneys to come to City Hall, set up tables, the three, there's just three of them, and let residents come up and physically speak to them and have a chance to do a roundabout with them and ask questions? Not in a tax session, but a information session from residents, maybe from, you know, 10 to 12, or 10:11, 10:30 something, on Saturday so that they feel like they have their time. And then if we want to do something an hour before the meeting, we have a chance as well to, you know, you might want to do it again. But to give residents one hour on a Monday before a meeting and get that cram session in, I just think it's not fair, because there's too many people who work until 5:00. That's banker's hours, 9 to 5:00. Then by the time they get here, it's 5:30, 6:00 o'clock, and then they didn't get a chance.
Your best chance is to do the Saturday morning, 10 to 12, in, at City Hall, in this facility, and we'll set up tables for them, and I'm sure that they'll either make arrangements or be here.
I agree with that. I mean, and the commissioners don't have to be there, as a matter of fact, I think it's even better so the residents, you know, don't feel any type of pressure, but if they're wanting this job, I really don't see why they would have an excuse to not be here on Saturday. They want it, they have to compete for it, so.
How about a consensus on that being a thing? If we all agree on it, then we're golden.
Commissioner McCool.
We're all good?
All good.
Okay, we'll set it up.
And I just, I'm sorry, I want to understand how we're getting feedback from our residents, okay? Like, on a Saturday, I want there to be, like, you know, I'm hoping, encouraging residents to email us, I'm hoping that I, you know, it's a slippery slope too, because the public comments are going to come before that agendated item, whereas they can provide feedback, but I just want to make sure that we're receiving feedback from the residents also. Again, not to beat a dead horse, but because it's their charter officer, and I hope that they will come out and talk and tell us what they want for representation. This is who is representing our city, and this is who is representing them, this is who is paying for this. You are paying, you are paying for this, you know, so I'm hoping that there will be feedback on that, sincere feedback.
Mr. Chisholm, also, can we have some way of, maybe some city employees, especially the ones that work with the city attorneys, can we have a way where they can anonymously give their opinions as well? No, I mean, because some city employees have, you know, they, I'm sure they've approached others.
They can come just like anybody else.
Okay.
There's not, there's no prohibition from them coming and talking to the attorneys or anybody, yeah.
Vice, Vice Mayor Bradford.
And how are we going to promote this? Because so many times we have something like this take place, and we have zilch show up, because we rely on Facebook and Twitter and Instagram. How many people are not on these channels and they, I didn't even know this was taking place, you know, and that's going to be something that we're going to be addressing, I'm sure, in the future, of how are we notifying residents of important issues other than social media?
Well, you can do social media, we can put, it's on channel, we're on channel now.
Nobody watches that.
I don't know if anybody watches it, but we'll do our best to promote it with everything we have.
What happened to the, we used to put out for events, one, we had put polls up for banners, and then I heard that the polls were legal, then I heard the polls weren't illegal, it just costs too much to put the signs up, which still blows my mind, then why did we put the polls up? And then, for other events that we feel is important, we'll put up, with the county's permission, the notification signs, you know, I've seen them on Howland, we've had them on Saxon, you know, this is, this is very important to the residents, and we'll get a lot of flat, hit back if we don't properly let them know it's out there.
You mean like the road signs?
Yeah, something we... Yeah, I mean, I'm sure our PIO will give us some great ideas, but we really got to start thinking outside of the box, outside of social media and outside of DTV. I hate to say it, people watch it, but not like, I'm not sitting there glued watching that TV.
The other thing, if you delay it a little longer, then you can, you can get it out with as much of the media as possible. Now, there's no, no guarantee that the, the independent media is going to cover it, but in any event, we can try to, try to encourage everybody to be a part of it. And we'll put it on our signage, we'll put all our signage up.
When's Jody out?
Commissioner Jody Lee.
When are you off? When are you out of the country?
I'm out between 8:00 and 15:00.
Between what?
8:00 to 15:00.
But, they...
Yeah?
All right. You know, this whole thing about the social media and put it out, I mean, this, this has still been out, everybody in the city are people that are paying attention. This ain't something new. This, again, this is something we've been talking about for a couple of months now. I, I don't even know how to, how we get people interested in what we're doing in it as a city, because, no offense, I mean, I'm glad everybody that's here is here, but at the same time, we've been talking about for two months, and we got a dozen people. We, we got to do something to get people in this city involved. I mean, whatever we're doing for the past several years, it's absolutely not working. I mean, I mean, look, we've been talking about this, I made this motion a few months ago, people have been paying attention to the city website, knew we were having a meeting tonight, and look, I applaud you all for being here, thank you for coming, taking your time off for your night. But, I mean, people are more worried right now about putting gas in their car and paying their water bill and their electric bill than what we're arguing about up here. I mean, it's more than obvious, there's 100,000 people in the city, we got 12 people here. That's, I'm sorry, but that's the most embarrassing thing ever. That means we're not putting out the information that our residents need, or they don't care, one of the two. So, this Facebook, guess what, ain't working. It works when you want to call someone names, but other than that, our advertising for the city ain't working. We need to do something else. I don't know, I don't know about banners and all this other garbage and junk and, like the Penny Saver, does anybody really read that anymore? It's great for litter box, but, I mean, we got to do something different than what we've been doing. The same thing we do all the time in this city, you know, because every time you ask, "Well, why are we doing it?" Well, that's because, that's what we always do. Well, evidently, it ain't working. That's why we never fix nothing here. Okay, my rant's over.
Mr. Chisholm, can we have the PIO do a press release even, and send it out to all the news stations, that, that also can help as well?
Absolutely, we'll do that. You know, a large part of what you're hearing is, you know, the public, they elect you to make decisions, and that's, that's the whole point of us having meetings. I guarantee you, if you have a decision to make on an, an issue that has financial implications, they will be here. But if they don't have an interest in charter officers, some will, some won't, those that will will be here. So, I don't think it's always, does a message get out, you know, I think sometimes it's just the fact that I'd rather go fishing than go drink coffee.
Commissioner McCool, and then Commissioner Avila Vasquez.
I was just going to bring up what we talked about, we have a new PIO to do these types of things, and we should enlist our PIO and listen to what our PIO says about doing this, but either way, either way, the public needs to be involved. Those that want to be involved need to be involved, you know, and it's just part of due process, it's all, yeah, it's been out for two months, but we've not narrowed it down until just now, right? So, if they come, they come, if they don't, and we only can make decisions based on the amount of information given back to us and feedback, and actually taking the feedback. Are we going to do what we want to do, or are we going to do what the people want us to do? That's the question. That's the big question there. Are we, is, you know, are we going to accept that feedback and listen to what they say? I would be, I would be really interested to quantify the feedback that the people have to see if we're doing what the will of the people said, even if it's a random sampling of people, I mean, yeah, that's what we get paid for, but I just want to hear that. I want to hear, at that meeting, a little box in it where the residents say, "This would be my choice," and I want to understand that we're listening to that. So, I need data to quantify, how do we measure, are we listening to our residents? And so, that's my concern also. Do, first of all, do we give them the opportunity to speak? Second of all, do we actually listen to them? And I want that feedback, and I want it quantified, you know, moving forward as a city, we need some feedback like that, because we get accused all the time of doing what we want to do, what we want to do, and we don't listen to the people, and I just want a way to measure that. So, that's my ask also in this process. People, if you can hear me, if you are listening, do your research, send in information, who you would like to see representing you. Otherwise, we can only make decisions based on our own best judgment, and it's up to you to decide if we're using our best judgment. So, you must participate in order, you must play in order to win, and I encourage you, because I know people are out there listening, send your feedback in, because we need to understand, we need you to understand that we're listening, and I need to understand what it is you want. Otherwise, I'm making the decision based on the limited information that I have, period.
All right, we're going to go to the last two commissioners, and then we're going to go to public comments, so Commissioner Avila Vasquez, and then Commissioner Jody Lee.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Chisholm, I don't know what activities we have right now announced on the marquees in the streets, but maybe for this week, we can just make it the announcement of this, of what's being planned. And I love those colors that they use, but for this one, can we just put letters that you can read?
Right.
You know, while you're driving, that you can actually look and say, "Wow, I can read it really fast."
Right.
And not, you know, the other psychedelic letters, I think, and just let it sit there. Don't flash it, don't, just let it sit there so people can read it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Good idea.
Commissioner Jody Lee.
Okay, I'm seeing if we're going to end this. We're talking about getting people out. Put out there, free pizza, I'll donate 20 pizzas. Then you put, you laugh. You put free pizza, you put free food out there, people come, don't nod. There's one thing I know about getting people to events.
Breakfast.
I don't care what it is, breakfast, lunch, I'll buy a bunch of sandwiches. You put out free food, people come. Just say it, I mean, we get the same people that come to meetings all the time, and of course, you, everybody knows, no matter what you do, and no matter how we do this, there's going to be some people that aren't going to be happy no matter what you do, they just like to, "Wam, wam, wam, my life, my daddy didn't love me the whole nine yards." I get it. But you know something, there's, we're going to catch hell for no matter what we do. I mean, I don't know if, you know, I keep hearing you're saying, "We work for, you work for me." Well, well, guess what? That 200 bucks you pay me every week goes a long way. Well, it's actually like 180, but, I don't know. What are you saying? You know, we get elected to speak for the people, we got elected because people have faith in us to make the right decisions. They didn't say everybody in town is going to like your decision. So, let's, I mean, let's get down to the point. We, we serve the people, they elected us to make the decisions so they can worry about putting food on their table, so they can worry about putting gas in their car, paying their bills, stuff like that. But, like I said, no matter what we do, there's going to be a handful that aren't going to be happy no matter what we do, no matter how much participation they have in the role, it doesn't matter. They're going to complain anyway. You can let them do the interview, we'll make the decision, and they're going to complain. So, let's do what we're going to do and move on.
Thank you, Commissioner. City Clerk, public comment.
So, I have Terry Ellis, Richard Bellic after that, Brandy White, Valerie Vadney, and Albert Bryan. Terry Ellis. Oh.
People work all week, sad day, morning, they got to get up, they got to bed, get up by 10:00 o'clock. Come on, give them a break, 11 to 3, something like that, give them a break. Now, as far as what you just said, you haven't done nothing right, you, you're correct in saying that. This city hasn't done nothing right in 27 years. I mean, I got to agree with you. Another thing now, it looks like Marcia's going to be the next city attorney. I mean, this looks like a shoo-in, this looks like a done deal. I mean, the residents, listen to me now. Remember the storm, they made Marcia the acting city manager? You just couldn't find her, she wouldn't answer phone calls, she was obsolete, she wasn't here. Nobody could get her, yous all complained, remember? There was like 50 complaints about her, all right? Now, let's get to the food trucks. How long did she drag on with the food truck? She didn't even got the laws right. David Sosa had to give yous the laws. Sosa had to give yous the laws. She didn't have the laws right. I got nothing against, I like, I know she's an old woman, I tease her all the time. She's not capable of handling the job, yous all know it. Certain of yous up there want to do it because you get favors from her. Bradford, over here.
Mr. Mr. Bellic.
Okay, Marcia gave some advice about...
Mr. Bellic, give me just a minute. City Clerk, the timer's not on.
1.6 hours. Marcia charged that. There's no favor there. What is she going to do, take every penny she can out of here, suck every nickel she can? That's what it looks like. Residents, remember, you couldn't find her during the storm, a critical time, you had water in your houses. The food trucks went on for how long?
Thank you, Mr. Bellic.
How long?
Thank you.
Man, a lot was said tonight. Hi, everyone, Terry Ellis. Okay, so, quickly, first of all, wow. I hope at some point we have a workshop about how to get people here, because the problem is that this problem has been going on for a long time, and you don't have any consistency in your marketing plan, and your marketing plan has to start with a solid plan, it has to be executed, it has to be communicated on multiple levels, multiple times, for a while, so that people actually start to believe it and buy into it. That's like Marketing 101. Okay. Now, as far as not getting things done, I want to say a few words to you. Definition, define what it is that you want. Scoping, I sent everyone an email this week about scoping, okay? Define the scope of what you're trying to accomplish. Timelines and reporting, okay? The reason that nothing gets done, and Jody, and Jody Lee, you're, the reason why things keep getting, getting kicked down the road is because we're not doing those things. Defining it, defining the scope, giving it timelines, and giving it some kind of reporting, okay? That's why nothing's happening. And I'm just going, and then third, and then lastly, please don't ever say that nobody looks at these meetings, please don't ever say that again, because it's really disrespectful. We look at the meetings, there's going to be a challenge on social media pretty soon that hopefully is going to really put a dent in that. But, some people might not even look that night, but me, for example, if I'm not here, I might not even look that night, but I look that morning, or the next morning, or the next day. day. People are watching, so please don't ever make that statement again. Thank you.
Brandy White, Deltona. Mine's going to be a little scattered because it was as you guys were speaking. So several of you now have stated that nothing's been done for months, close to a year for some things, like the moratorium. So the consideration of even retaining the, any part of the firm you're firing makes absolutely zero sense. Has anybody did comparable rates with other cities and what they're getting for their One commissioner stated that they read some things they didn't like, one of which was that insurance provides their own attorneys. We don't have to like that, but it's a fact. That is how the process works. Insurance companies provide their own attorneys, whether we have one or not. It, it's just a fact. Also, based on looking at things, you knew that they wouldn't be available to answer a call, so that's a little odd. Marcia, in fact, was actually part of the reason we've had so many lawsuits and, and I don't know how you're not remembering that, especially mine. She was like a key part of the false allegations against me that caused conflict in the adoption. How do you guys forget that? Do, you don't remember the shade meeting where it was all discussed? I mean, these things are public record. Also, it's not that you guys aren't putting it out, it's that we have learned over time, our voices don't matter, so why waste our time in coming? I hope that changes. I hope you're serious that you want to see that change, but that means quantifying if you're doing what the people are asking you to do. So the same thing, I would love that suggestion, it was an amazing suggestion and I, I hope we actually see some type of quantifying factors for that. And lastly, Mike, Commissioner, you're a joke, man. Like Marcia, that's it, that's your, that's your only thing.
Ms. White.
What disqualifies others? Enlighten the constituents as to what disqualified all the others. Thank you.
Just going to ask the residents that are present. I know a lot of us are still upset about things that have happened in the past, but we need to start moving forward. Let's keep the personal attacks down.
That's not really.
I understand, folks, come on. I get it 100%, but let's keep the personal attacks down.
There's nothing personal, it's all facts.
Valerie Vadney, I believe it is.
Hi, Valerie Vadney, Deltona. I did want to mention for advertisement, I don't know why we don't use Bright House and a news crawler to be able to go ahead and advertise what's happening in the city of Deltona. We all have Spectrum, I've seen all the complaints, how people have Spectrum and I'm sure a news crawler. I don't know if a robo-call is another option, reverse robo-calls like 911, if you have it for each of your districts and a robo-call can be done or made. I think it's an excellent idea to email the commissioners with your feedback when you do meet these attorneys. I think for you to be able to get that feedback and make an informed decision on what the residents want is going to be beneficial. I'm a little disillusioned, to say the least, about being short-sighted. I think, you know, we're complacent, have been complacent. We have certain things that we like, but we've got to expand our horizons, no offense to our current attorney, but we've had a lot of lawsuits here that are not working out well for us and costing the taxpayers money. You want quality versus quantity. If you have to pay, you got to pay. And somebody who's going to only charge you $300,000, an individual, I agree with you, Jody, it, something needs to change here and she's not going to be able to answer all those questions for you. She's going to have to subcontract it up and there goes the bill. So up and up it goes. But I think that our residents may not have as much confidence because there is a feeling out there that, you know, it falls on deaf ears here, but this is a new commission, new mayor. I know our mayor is doing a great job in communicating here with us and keeping us in touch, but we really need to look and broaden our horizons here and make a difference in this city. Thanks.
All right, let's start this off with one thing. To have a meeting on Saturday is telling all your residents you don't really give a, you want them to say here, because most of the residents, they work, where? Oh, that's right, in Orlando, or they work in Daytona Beach. You think they want to come in here on a Saturday? That's about asinine. But, you know, I, I expect that from you people, I really do now. I mean, that's just how stupid this place is. Okay, now, secondly, y'all take and throw out Marcia's name, but Jody Lee, in his motion, said bad billing. Well, let, let me think about this. 88% of all the billing that comes out of that man right there is her billing, not him. So to even consider her is a joke. It means none of y'all have actually understood what in the hell is actually going on. Januaries invoices from that man right there, you know how many hours that man right there put in for? Oh, that's right, only a couple. She put in 95% of all the hours he billed for, but you want to bring her back in, really? Now, talking about January, it's kind of funny. 22 times she had to review the league of cities paperwork or the managers' review notes from the county. That's $1,900 for eight hours of reviewing something that comes out twice a month. Eight hours to review something that comes out twice a month and y'all are actually talking about her, really? That's amazing. It means none of y'all know what the hell you're doing.
Moving to Inception B, review and discussion of contract for James V. Chisholm to serve as a city manager.
Mr. Mayor, I think in commissioners, I have included a copy of the contract in your package. It is the very same with the exception of one year, 10-year, one year of employment and the compensation is moved to 200,000 as suggested by the commission. And that's really the basic of it. Everything else remains the same.
Commissioner Jody Lee.
I guess I'll start this. I made a motion a couple weeks ago and I guess I didn't make a better, or put my, my reasoning out there as clear as I should have. Well, the reason why I did that is because we have a lot of projects that need to be getting done. Nothing's better than getting done. Our interim city manager wasn't going to start doing a million dollar project because if he's going to be here for a month or two, he's not going to start a big project for another guy to come in while a project's already started. It's just common sense, nobody would do it. I made a motion about his, about his pay and all, and of course, I got lambasted on that too, but which is, if you look around at city managers, I think the city manager in Daytona's getting 240, the one in Orange City's getting 180, the one in Port Orange is getting 175. But I got some records here from, it's kind of funny, some, from city managers that were here. I mean, in 2021, Mr. Peters with his stuff was at 265,000. Okay? Mr. Cooper with all his stuff was over 200,000. Now, Mr. Peters was never a city manager before and he's getting over 200,000. Mr. Cooper was an assistant manager and he was over 200,000. Now, that was the big one and I, I'm glad I wasn't here because this, I wasn't here back then. That's for, this Jane Shang with all her extras, she's at $392,000. That is insane. I'm sorry. She was a deputy city manager before she came here. She wasn't a city manager, she was a deputy and she's getting that. This gentleman here has 40 years as a city manager. One of my other reasoning behind making the motion for Mr. Chisholm for a contract for a year, he can hire an assistant wherever he finds him. Hopefully, it's not somebody local, nobody that knows everybody here, but Mr. Chisholm knows what he's doing. He didn't last through all them different mayors and all the different commissions in Daytona for nothing. If he hires a city assistant when he retires, they can take over. We get a chance to get to know this person, we get to work with this person, we get to see what this person's going to be like. The worst part about all this whole background about getting a manager and doing these interviews, if anybody's ever had a business and done interviews, you're going to get somebody's going to come in, they're going to be as nice as could be, they're going to stand there and they're going to tell you everything you want to hear until they have the job. And then guess what? Now we're stuck because you can't just turn around and fire them. If we get a stranger, everybody that comes from all these different states that wants to be a manager in Deltona, for one, I think they should, they should be drug tested first. For two, you come here, they're going to say and stand there for an interview and say everything you want to hear. They're going to be nice as could be, they're going to be polite as could be, they're going to address all your little things, they're going to get on your Facebook and see some of the stuff you like and they're going to answer your questions modified to what you might want to ask or how you might feel. And then the next commissioner, they're going to do the same thing to them. So you, you're, they're going to be on their best behavior if we hire a city manager. We have someone out here that's got projects, we just got this report with all these projects going, getting started. I talk to them almost on a daily basis and ask them how things is going, how things are going, how's he doing, how's his day, you know, just regular small talk. But I know the stuff that's in the pipe, I know things that are coming. That's why I did this. Let him work, let him get these projects done, he has experience, he's already found the stuff, they're in due time, there's going to be conversations, I'm sure I'll spill the beans and put it out there for everybody to hear about different things that was going on, that he has found and things that were taking place that he has found and I'm, I'm happy he's there finding these things because frankly, there's, there's a lot of stuff that was going on that damn sure shouldn't have been going on in this city and never mind this city, but any city. But I'm glad he's here doing this, let's get the manager's spot done, let's get these projects going. We're going to blink, we're going to kick the can down the road again on this, we're going to blink, it's going to be hurricane season again, we're going to flood again and then we're going to have a brand new city manager that blew smoke up our rears to get a job and guess what? Nothing's going to be fixed and people are going to be saying, you don't care about me no more, my house is flooded, it happened last time, you didn't do nothing from last year. That's my whole purpose of making the motion for the city manager. Let's get some stuff done, hire an assistant, when you retire and you're done, we have the assistant, we get a chance to test drive them, so to speak, see how this person is, how he reacts with city staff. No. I, I've talked to the city staff all day today. I, I talked to people, I asked them how they're doing, I've talked to different people in different departments and the morale of city staff, I hate to be, I don't know if anybody checked, but the morale of city staff is through the roof. They are loving life. So it is what it is.
Commissioner McCool.
Not everyone, but the overall.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I would like, I would like to find out, the benefit package, does anyone have the dollar amount on the benefit package, the complete benefit package? Does anyone have that number? The benefit package, the benefits, the health dental vision for city manager and spouse, do we have that number? Do we have anyone? Do we have, does anyone know, like roundabout?
I haven't, I haven't done that, no.
What I have a problem with here, and I've said this time and time again, I don't know how it gets misinterpreted, I adore our interim city manager. Our city manager is doing a fantastic job. Everyone likes the job that the city manager is doing. That's not in question. What is in question there again is our process. So we raised the salary to $200,000, we've looked at the benefits to plus plus with every other city manager that we've had, but we've not looked at the, the whole benefit package and salary together. I want to understand that. So if it's $200,000, I need to understand what's on top of that with the benefits package, okay? That's first of all. Second of all, I have a fundamental issue with us bypassing the resident input that we promised that the resident was going to get, the residents were going to get. I have a problem with that also. And we already have a deputy city manager that was hired and she, I met her today, she was hired a week ago, so we, assistant?
Assistant city manager.
Assistant, assistant city manager that we already have. So I met her today. And third of all, we're going to be known as a stand-up city because we put out this, we put out a request for dates and then we stood them up. And so now, when we get time to do the process again, are we going to be hiring firms again and are, what are we going to do about that? We're not very good at keeping our word and that's the part that I have a problem with. I just want us to get due process under control. Mr. Chisholm might like want to be here for another year, who knows? I mean, I like the work that he's doing. He said he didn't want to be here for that long, but apparently we have romanced him and he has agreed to stay. I'm just saying, we didn't follow process and that's what I have a problem with, not the job that he's doing. He's worked every penny he gets, don't get me wrong. The list of projects that he's doing right now is, is amazing, but again, I have a problem that we did this and we did not, again, go to our residents. I just want that on the record and I want to understand what the full benefit package is on this because I don't know what that is. I know what I pay for insurance every month and I, you know, so I just want to understand that. $200,000, we mentioned the other cities, let's look at the ratio of the other cities, commerce to residents also, right? These other cities are managing way, much more, at least 50% more commerce than we are and if anything, we need to also enhance our economic development because, and he's good at that, but I'm just saying, that's where the focus needs to be. That's why those city managers get paid what they get paid. They're managing a lot of commerce, they're managing tourism, they're managing beaches. You know, we're managing bedroom community, it's a different, it's a different animal. Not saying Mr. Chisholm's not worth it, but I'm sick of us using the comparison when we're not that. You know, we have stuff coming in and we'll have stuff coming in, but it's, it's not the same. And I just want to understand, I want the residents to understand in complete transparency what we're talking about. That's, this is like here, this is kind of like chicken math, you know? And I just want us to be clear on that. If we could please clear that up before, before we vote on this so that the people understand what they're paying for versus what we told them they're getting. That's all I'm requesting. Thank you.
Think where I had my issue was obviously not with the city manager, right, is two weeks prior or the commission meeting prior, we specifically had this on the, on the agenda. It was advertised, the residents knew that we were going to talk about a city manager. You know, and I'm pretty sure residents are going to get mad about what I'm, for what I'm about to say, but if we would have brought this up at that moment, I probably would have voted for it because we advertised it, we, the, the residents knew that it was going to be that and I blame myself for that because I, obviously, as I continue to learn, I didn't read the policies and procedures and, you know, we probably shouldn't be making motions during, during comments and things like that. So the upset and uproar that I hear from the residents, it's not, it's not really because what was done, more, more than that is because it was, it was when it was done. So I, I think that we had led the residents to believe that we were going to search for a new city manager and then two weeks later or the next commission meeting later, we look for another city manager, but we also want to hire one for at least a year." And I get, I think that's, I'm not saying it's bad, I don't want to rush into looking for a new city manager. I've said that from the very beginning, because that's why we ran into the, I'm not gonna mention their names, the former city managers that we ran into, all of them, with no exception, because we ran into just hiring somebody. So I think it's good practice, I just don't think it was a good practice when it was done. That is my issue. The other, the second issue that I believe our residents have, and I'm not speaking for everybody, is that currently, the former commission that was up here, including the former mayor, put something in place where Mr. Chisholm's contract would renew every six months. Why can't we just not follow that and continue renewing his six months until we find our new city manager? We don't have to rush into anything. We can be concentrating on other things, and again, I don't want to short-change Mr. Chisholm. I echo everybody up here, I highly doubt anybody here thinks that he's not doing a good job. For goodness gracious, the gentleman just, he just gave me a packet of things that he's doing. So I know he's doing stuff, I speak to him almost on a daily basis, he's probably annoyed with me already, but he's, I mean, I just think the way it was done was probably what upset people. So I'm not saying that your motion was bad, Jody, I'm just saying that in the future, let's try to make sure that things are on the agenda. And again, I'm blaming myself for that as the head of this, of this dais, a person that runs it, because I should've realized that under our policies and procedures, we really shouldn't be doing that. So, those are my two cents. I'll go to Commissioner Jody Lee, because I see you're on the board.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, you're right, maybe I shouldn't have, maybe, should've, could've, don't make a difference, it's over and done with now. You know, this whole thing about when we should make motions and all this other stuff, you have to understand, we're gonna make, like I said before, residents are gonna get mad. You know, I had a lot of people say, "It wasn't on the agenda, you shouldn't have made a motion." Okay, let's go back a few meetings earlier, where I made a motion to get rid of the city attorney. Guess what? Everybody clapped. But it wasn't on the agenda. Guess what? When you do stuff people like, they're all for it. If you do stuff they don't like, they're against it. The rules only apply sometimes for some. Now, from now on, if it's not on the agenda, I won't make a motion for things. That's fine, we can play it, we do that, do it that way. But you can't have it both ways, where people say, "Oh, it's not on the agenda, you can't do the motion." But if I made a motion like I did with the city to get rid of the attorneys in the beginning, it was uproar, it was clapping, it was lovely, but, I don't know, it wasn't on the agenda.
You're 100%.
And people loved it.
You're right, 100%.
So, when you do something you don't like, or they don't like, you catch a lamb baiting, then they can call you names and all kinds of other stuff, which is fine. I like living rent-free in people's head, it's great. But, it is what it is. I mean, there was something that was done last week, or the other day, sorry, not last... You made a motion for something. A censor. That wasn't on the agenda either.
For the presentations?
No, when you censored Mr. Burbank.
I think that's a little bit different.
It's still a motion. Not that it wasn't deserved, or however it was, but we have to be fair across the board all the way around. And I'm agreeing with you, if it's not, if it's not on the agenda, then it's fine, let's stick to our guns. But the previous administrations and commissioners that were sitting here in all our places had started this precedent, and we all just followed along with it, because it's been done before, so we did it. That's fine, then let's stop doing it and stick to the agenda. And I'm all good with that.
We're gonna be the commission to stop doing that.
I'm all good with that.
Thank you, Commissioner Jody Lee. Vice Mayor Bradford?
I'm not disagreeing with any of you guys, because you're 100% correct, but that's not what we're here to talk about right now. So, we're gonna talk about the obvious that nobody wants to talk about. So we have a contract in front of us, Mr. Chisholm, that you have asked us all to review. As Commissioner Jody Lee has stated, you know, you're in line pay-wise, I'm gonna guess benefits is probably over $100,000 because of insurance, vacations, and all that, which is probably also in line with most city managers. I've sat here for six years, and I have never, in six years, been given a list by a city manager of the projects, the status, and where you're at with these projects. I have also had many comments from staff, and I'll give you a few. It is so refreshing, this is the number-one comment, "I am so happy we are not being micromanaged. We finally have somebody who trusts me to do my job. I'm told to do something, and I'm allowed to get it done, and I'm not being micromanaged." I want to tell you thank you, because in six years, alls I have heard is, "I really wish they would let me do the job I was hired to do." And that, when you have somebody who doesn't micromanage, you're able to move projects along. They don't have to have their hand on every little thing and put their thumb on holding a project down. That's important. And a real manager knows how to delegate. A real manager knows how to manage his team to move the projects on. Thank you. Because I've only got two years left, and I'd love to see some of these projects that have been on our agenda for six years get to the fruition stage, and I'm happy to see you're moving them along. Thank you. I personally don't have a problem with this. I see nothing out of line that any other city manager, interim city manager, inexperienced city manager, or anybody has approached us with, and to have somebody with your 20-plus years of experience at this rate, I have no problem with. None. That's my opinion. I would love to see this put on the agenda, I would love to see this voted on, I would love to see us move forward, so we can continue to move these items forward and move Daytona forward. That is my opinion.
Any other comments from the commissioners up here? No? Can we move to public comment, please?
Do you want to be first, Terri? I can... So I have Terri Ellis, Brandy White, Valerie Vadney, Carolyn Hickerson, and Albert Brian.
Hello again. Okay, so, first of all, I did a little bit of research, because, you know, everyone's talking about the salary and $40,000, and why does he deserve, you know, an extra $40,000? And I looked at cities of like, looked at the census, and looked at population and median income, and looked at some economics, and for $200,000, we're getting a pretty good deal. And I've been here for eight years, and Mr. Chisholm will be the sixth city manager, no, fifth, one, two, three, four, five, six, yeah, sixth city manager in eight years that I've had to deal with. So the fact that we're getting somebody with 20 years is a good thing. Happy to hear that you got a list of projects. I've been asking about that for years, I've been asking, can the public get that as well? You know, it would be nice to know where we are with projects, and I know, Ms. Vasquez, that, you know, you were talking about the projects that you can get done, and I thought to myself, well, that's because nobody wants to give you any information about project status, and is it red, green, yellow, what do we need to do to move it along? And nobody's been willing to do that, and then we changed, you know, people all this time, and every time, you're right, things get stalled. So, I was really happy to hear that. A lot of things that, you know, I'm hearing about Mr. Chisholm, and I've talked to some city employees as well, but I'm gonna say the same thing that I started with earlier, which is scoping timelines, reporting a definition. If we could put those things around even what's going on with the city manager's contract and then one other thing. I read something in there about this contract, you know, there's, you can't put anything with it, blah, 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 but we haven't talked about reporting, performance reporting. So, can we get something, maybe not in the contract, but unofficial, to address that matter? But thank you.
You just don't even know how much his contract is gonna cost the city, but you're making decisions. You don't know the figure. You don't even have a figure, and you just want to make a decision. Now, let me tell you something, I'm gonna tell you, I come up here, whatever you think, I tell the truth. The people's complaints with him is he lied to them for months. He lied to them. "I'm sure term, I'm sure..." But, as soon as $40,000 more came in, everything changed. Now, I seen him on film with a woman, that a woman asked him, "What can I do about the flood?" He said, "Move." That's what his answer was, "Move." "That's your $200,000, man." "Move" was his answer. And it's on tape. You want me to bring the tape? Tell me you'll play it, and I'll bring it. Come on, this is ridiculous now. Another thing, you're talking about his figure, we don't have the commerce, we don't have the businesses like that these other cities have. It's easy for them to pay big money. Now, he said he was leaving, now he ain't leaving. What do you think the people are saying? That this guy's full of, you know, I mean, come on. What are people supposed to think? They're right a month after month after month. When time comes, when you're supposed to go, you have a new city manager, you don't do it. And then you, this is why you don't see them. Is that numb? Come on, you just gotta wake up someday. I mean, these guys, see, I could give them a little slack, they're new. But some of you others have been there for years, six years, four years, five years, and you still ain't learned. The people don't trust yous, they don't even like yous. Look on Facebook. What do they say about yous? She asked you, "How much is the total contract? How much is it gonna cost the city?" Yous don't even know, but you want to hire the guy. What are we, in kindergarten here? Or first grade? You're no further than that. People are laughing. What do we got running this place? This Bonn-Belly Circus? That's better run than this place, that's sure.
Brandy White, please. Brandy White. I asked on record over two weeks ago, as well as over a week ago in a private meeting with you, Mayor, to have these numbers here tonight. Actually, I asked them to have them for the last meeting, when it was moved to a workshop. So I'm really confused, and I'd like an answer, as to have those numbers been requested, and if so, why have they not been provided? I'm also a little confused over some things I've heard here tonight, some contradicting We heard that he wasn't planning on starting any new major projects because he was gonna be here short-term, so I'm confused the reason why he would come to begin with, but then two of you have shown a large list of projects that have been completed. So, again, I've just heard two completely conflicting statements. In addition, just curious, why was the suggest in pay increase and not just, "Let's renew the contract"? Is there a specific reason why there was a necessary to bump up a 40K? Just trying to think of the logic behind these, because two of the commissioners up here have claimed that it's cheaper this way. So if we're still gonna do a search, whether it's in six months or two years, how is this cheaper? You're still gonna pay for a search. So I just want the breakdown of that thought process. And lastly, before the meeting's over, I would suggest that legal speak-up over here for their over a million dollars, and clarify the confusion on when motions should be made and how they should be made, and if there's any exceptions to those rules, because the guidelines are extremely clear that you cannot do those motions. And yes, we clapped and applauded, but if you look online, we all show question if that was even legit to do. So, thank you.
Valerie Vadney, Daytona. I'm not gonna take the whole two minutes here, but I did want to talk about, when I first started coming to city commission meetings, and I've been here for 27 years, but really got involved the last couple of years in paying attention as to what's going on, but there used to be a report. We used to have Parks and Recreation do a report, Public Works, before every city commission, before public comments or what have you, just to give you an update as to what's going on. And that fell by the wayside. We've not had a report. And I know from the last meeting that you just had on Monday evening, there were some questions about some of the projects that were going on, like Lake Shore, that's in my district. That has been a nightmare, this has been going for, I don't know how many months, but it's still not resolved, and it doesn't look like it's gonna be resolved for another 30, 60 days or what have you. But when looking at a salary for a city manager, what are you basing it on? Because this is a bedroom community, as opposed to a business-driven community. So, what is our revenue that we take in, our tax base in comparison to the other vicinities like Daytona Beach, who has a lot of business? I'm not saying that the commission is not worth it, you get what you pay for, but I also think that, you know, for many of you who have been on here on this commission and have done the hiring and have gone through the process, you can admit that you didn't do a very good job, when you're giving kudos to Mr. Chisholm and what's going on now. And I've heard good things, but I've also heard, you know, that he's not as approachable. I don't know, it's six and one-half dozen of the other, but I would ask that you consider looking at, you know, our revenue, what we take in, other cities, and see if we can get more reports done on a monthly basis before our meeting. Thank you.
Carolyn Hickerson?
Carolyn Hickerson, Daytona. I want to kind of piggyback on what she just said. I haven't really been involved, because of the last group that was here was not safe. I didn't feel safe. You know, widowed senior citizen, raising her grandson at the time, it wasn't a place I wanted to bring him. But what I noticed at the last meeting that I did attend was that there is a lot of residual anger in your citizens. And part of that, from what I've observed, is a lack of transparency. And I asked the mayor about it at the last meeting, I asked the city manager about it at the last meeting, why we do not have department heads and board members giving reports each month, that you can ask questions, and that we could hear what's going on in the city. People hollering out or being angry, we're never gonna accomplish anything if we're not calm and respectful of one another. I don't know all of you, because I really haven't been involved for the reason that I gave. I would like to know, do we have an employee handbook and an ethics commitment that you give to every employee on hire and that we follow, that is followed? That came up at the last meeting in my head. We're here, I'm hearing a lot of things that we're asking for things and we're not getting it, perhaps because we're not asking for it correctly. We're making a lot of noise in a meeting, but we're not asking the department heads and the boards to come here, to give a report, so that you can ask them directly and not ask the air, because we can't give you these answers, they can. So, those are the kinds of things I'd like to know. And, I'm sorry, my time is just about up, but no more mamsy-pamsy government, let's just try to do this right, and Robert's rules of order, and respectfully come along and help one another.
Wow. I don't know who wrote this contract, but, wow. First off, 2A actually contradicts with 4C or 4A. One says one-year contract, one says two-year contract. Wow, that's interesting. But, now, let's think about this just a little bit more. We also have a section in here where it literally takes away your ability to terminate him for cause. So, no matter what he does, you have to give him 30 days, no matter what he does. Even if he comes in here, suits one of y'all, you still have to give him 30 days, so he can be fired. can be fired. That should never, ever happen. Then, you know, they asked for numbers. We didn't get any numbers. None of y'all obviously got any numbers. So I ask FSR, are they gonna have a problem opting out with him? Or are we paying him 27% retirement fund? Or 6% like we pay a normal employee? Because it contradicts itself also in here, because it says, "He wants to be a normal employee," but yet, he doesn't really wanna be treated like a normal employee because of the way this contract reads. Now, we gave him 80 hours, last contractor. We giving him another 80 hours. Hmm, that's interesting. Now, the other thing is, he thinks that being a city manager, he can go out and do consulting with Daytona Beach or anybody else for that matter. Are we paying him for that too? Hmm. Oh, the one thing that really caught me tonight was the fact that y'all said something about Mr. Peters' pay. Mr. Peters was paid 225, max, all benefits and everything. His reaches out, "Oh, that's right, top end, almost $300,000." But I didn't hear you say any of that. All I heard was 200,000. But we don't know that for sure, now do we?
William, I believe it's Mayberry?
Hello, everyone. I was just listening online and heard something about free pizza, so I had to come down. So, no, really, I just wanted to come and just say hi and just really let you know that we appreciate everything that you do. And you're scrutinized for every single thing that you do, and you get scrutinized for everything that you do. And that's just the nature of the beast in Public Works. But, you know, everybody's trying to work together and trying to make the city better. And I just want you to know that I appreciate it. I'm sure there are a lot of people that are out here that appreciate that. And so just, you know, everybody's gotta treat each other with kindness so we can, you know, move the city along and build something better. And I just wanted to come down and let you know. Thanks.
Thank you.
I love him.
Vice Mayor Bradford.
Okay, so I did see a lot of controversy regarding motions being made. So I encourage everybody to please look at the Deltona City Commission Operating Guidelines, Meeting Rules and Procedures. Section 3H. No action shall be taken on matters not on the agenda, including during citizen comments or commission comments. However, if necessary, an item may be added to the present agenda upon the proper motion, second, and majority vote, provided the commission finds that no additional information or public notice is required to consider the items at that time. An item may be added to a future agenda upon a proper motion, second, and majority vote. Such a motion shall be in order only during the Commissioner's Special Report and Request portion of the agenda. I want to say why this was added. This was added because we, as commissioners, were being silenced. We were being told items could not be put on an agenda. We were being told, "Shh, can't talk about it. Shh, point of order, can't speak on that." So this was put here so a commissioner could bring something up and have an item added to the agenda, or we weren't continuously silenced and waiting for an important item to be voted on. And if it doesn't cost us, as this is saying, finds that no additional information or public notice is required, we are allowed to do that. So there's been a lot of controversy that we were out of line, we're not allowed, we're against, we are allowed based on this. If we do not want this, just know, and that's why I'm saying, I want us to know where this came from. This came from commissioners being silenced. Commissioners were not able to say, like Mr. Burbank, I believe, at one time said, "Hey, let's talk about this." I brought it up several times. "Hey, let's have a meeting and talk about this. Let's have a workshop. Let's vote on this." If not, we have no voice. You are strictly relying on your city manager, not that Mr. Chisholm would do that, on a city manager to put an item on the agenda. I do not want my voice taken away. And I will not vote to have this removed from this, because in the beginning, I was that commissioner that was totally silenced out. I think several of us have been totally silenced out in the past. So to take that away from us, I don't agree with it. So I just wanted to throw that out. Again, if anybody has questions, I'll be happy, and I'm sure, is this updated on the website? Because they said they looked on the website and it wasn't updated. Joyce, was this updated?
No, we're actually bringing the revised version to you on the 20th of March, and then everything will be updated as soon as you approve. It hasn't been approved yet. We gotta do it by resolution.
But this was, this N was already...
That's the most recent one we have until you approve the next one.
But this N wasn't up there? This item H, I mean, item H, 3H?
That version that you're looking at should be on the website.
Okay, so if anybody has questions, it's 3H on there. Okay. And William, I love you too. Thank you for coming down here.
Commissioner Avila Vazquez.
Thank you, Mayor. And I also remember Commissioner Jody speaking to the attorney and asking him, "Was there a problem or an issue with the motion?" And he was told, "No." The only thing the attorney would have liked was it if he had given you a heads-up. But other than that, there was nothing wrong with having the motion, because it says, "Request", commissioners request and comment. So, thank you.
Commissioner Jody Lee.
When I did that, I understand, you know, it was done during a regular city meeting. It wasn't a workshop where I did it. And I've read that exact thing, Commissioner Anita, I've read that same thing that you just read out. And it says that we could do certain things. So I was following protocol that this commission has done in the past, maybe not necessarily with the same people, but it was something that was done. Now, I mean, I don't have a problem. I mean, I can, I mean, you also have to understand that there's things that can, I understand the silencing part, but there's, from what I understand, according to the different laws, if we want something on the agenda, you wanna talk about something, almost, we can all get something on the agenda if we want it on there. We just get, you know, making sure the city manager puts it on there. So...
And just for clarification, whoever was silencing the commissioners is not part of this current diocese. So just wanna make sure that's clarified.
That is clarified. And I'm sorry, that was not this commission. However, we can guarantee this commission's gonna be here in 10 years.
No, of course not.
So that's what I'm saying is, we gotta make sure that all of the commissioners always have that voice. I don't want us to lose that, because we do have a great commission up here. We have all worked wonderful together. You know, we all are, I think personally, I mean, we all bounce off each other, we feed well, we feed, you know, you guys, what you see up here when we walk off, we're okay with it. I'm okay with her and I disagree, and I'm okay with the mayor and I disagree, because when I walk off, I keep Q-tip in mind, "Quit taking it personal." And I don't. So when I walk off here, I don't take it personal. Jody, we all love you the same.
Do you think, Mr. Chisholm, it's very convenient for us to have some type of workshop on our policies and procedures, at least for us new folk up here? I know our veteran commissioners probably don't need that, but I'm not ashamed to say that. I would love more, more things to learn, because obviously, I'm still learning.
You know, I think we didn't want to break them, but I don't know if these guys were here for it, were they?
I don't know.
They didn't get, they didn't take office until December, the end of November, anyway.
I know, I've been through the process and distributed the, you know, the policy that was adopted by the commission previously. So I know we all have read it and know what's in there. And I know there were some suggestions at one of our meetings where we talked about changing various aspects of it. So we can certainly have another workshop on it. In fact, there's a couple of things I'm gonna recommend. I recommend we also take presentations that have been requested, have those presentations made at a workshop for that purpose, so that you get the benefit of, and the fun of letting the public talk to you about the presentations they have in their organizations, what kind of things they're involved in the community, rather than doing it at a, you know, at a city commission meeting, which is basically a business meeting for the city. So those are a couple of things that we could add to, do to those workshops.
Perfect. Do you have any comments, city manager?
Well, you know, I'm sorry I didn't calculate the benefits, but I think you're pretty close. 300,000 is probably the right number in the end. It is significantly less than any job I've had anywhere else. And I'm not complaining about it. I'm not trying to get more money. I'm certainly not doing that. I'm just trying to make you aware of factually, there's a substantial difference in what I'm making today than what, and even with this, than I was making previously for 17 years. Now, I can tell you that I enjoy working here, and I'm not here because of the money. I'm here because I think Deltona needs help. I have found things that I did not anticipate, and it's important for you to have a manager that understands those things. I'm not saying I'm the only one, there are others out there too. But there are significant numbers that impact this city based on decisions that were made probably five years ago, and other decisions that were made or not made in 1979. There were, there was a whole drainage plan, there was a whole flood plan, never implemented in 1979. So those are things that I've been able to locate for you. Anybody could find them, they're in the records. But there's other things that I have found that you probably wouldn't know about it unless you knew a little bit about how things work, and it's, there are millions of dollars that we're gonna try to save and preserve in some of the projects identified on that We will certainly, I think there were some good suggestions about having reports from departments in meetings. We can do that. I don't think it would be appropriate for us to have one meeting where we have all the departments meeting. That would take away from the business aspect of what we're doing. Maybe some of that needs to be done at a workshop rather than a business meeting. I guess, lastly, I am excited about working. I was retired for a year and a half, and I was not very excited at that point. So I'm excited to be working. The thing that, I think the thing that I think all of us have to remember, we're all trying to do the very same thing, solve problems in our community, provide a solution to the issues that we have, and do it in a civil manner. And that civil discourse is what is really needed here. I think it's as much on the public as it is on the diocese, but it is for all of us. You can't yell and scream and curse and expect anybody to listen to you. You're gonna turn me off. And I don't really have to sit here and listen to it. And I don't think the public has to. So that's not the way to, you know, to make a point. And I know this, I've talked to this young lady over here, I don't recall her name, about department, you know, reports, and I've had that in the past, and certainly we'll get to doing that. But you have to remember, there's been a substantial change in departments, personnel. So it's not just, I have, you know, four new people and people we brought on, we got some others that are still in acting positions. So we don't have a full contingent of department heads right now. So we're having to put that together, and it's not easy when an applicant turns on the TV to Deltona and listens to you and listens to our commission, and then they make a decision, do they wanna come and sit in this place, or one of those seats over there, and participate with this city? Professionals, they have opportunities in getting, and being able to attract a professional that is of quality. He doesn't have to come here. He doesn't have to come to Florida. He's gonna go wherever is, number one, best for his family, best for him financially. And I'm not saying it has to be the top pay, but best in his way of life that he can survive, and that the working conditions are such that it is an exciting opportunity for that person to be here and to stay. I can tell you, if I, if 17 years ago when I went to work in Daytona, if I had had the welcome I got here, I wouldn't have went to Daytona. Would not have happened. Because in that scenario, the community was looking for somebody to provide guidance and vision. The business community was looking for it, the private community, the minority community, they were all looking for somebody to provide leadership. Through all that, I had a, it was a great experience, because not only are you interviewing an applicant, that applicant's interviewing you. They may not wanna work for you. And that's part of the process, because when you have a public gathering, they're also evaluating you. And you're the kind of person they wanna meet with, you're the kind of person that they want to work with, because obviously, there are issues that you have, that you're concerned about, and they're gonna wanna hear that. They don't wanna be shouted at. So, you know, the lesson that I would take away from this job is that we have to be civil in the way we conduct business. We have to quit listening to the negative. Begin looking and listening to the positive and looking for, don't look back. I mean, I've been looking back for four months, because I had to find, you know, what was wrong, what is happening, and what's the issue. And you've seen the result of that pretty much in what I've given you tonight. That's looking back. Now, I have given information to the legislative delegation about where we're going in the future as it relates to the flooding, but that issue was on the table in 1979, and nothing happened. Well, there is one point. They built the outfall from Lake Dole, but that's the only thing that really, really came up. They didn't, they didn't look at the larger picture of the drainage basin and its interaction. They did look at the interaction between the other basins, but they didn't find another outfall. And that was a mistake that was made in that, in that plan. Of course, they didn't have the same scenarios that relates to flooding as we have today. So the last thing I'll say, it's a pleasure for me to work for you. I do enjoy my job. I do enjoy working with the staff here. We got a great staff. They're taxed, they do a wonderful job, and they love Deltona. And I can tell you, I don't live in Deltona right now, but I would have no premonition about moving if I was early in my career and didn't already have a significant investment in where I'm at currently. But I can tell you what, this is a quality community, got a great population, we have opportunities to make it an economic success. But I can't do it if everybody's gonna shout at each other. That won't happen, because the same people that you want here to make economic investment are the same people watching the TV and checking and investigating Deltona. They don't wanna come in here and get chewed up and spit out. Why would they wanna spend $100 million on a project and only to come to the public body and have to listen to, "Well, you're just raping this town, you're destroying our community." That will not bring economic development. So I would encourage everyone to think seriously about the way we carry on our business, both on the diocese as well as in the public. It's just as important to you, because the kind of community we have and can have is dependent on how you participate with it. And I'm not saying, don't vocally express your opinion, but do it in a civil manner. Do it in a way that not everybody's gonna get turned off and turn the TV off as soon as they listen. You may think that sounds good. And I'm not saying, don't vocally express your opinion, but do it in a civil manner. Do it in a way that not everybody's gonna get turned off, and turn the TV off as soon as they listen. You may think that sounds good, but it doesn't play in the real world. And we're in the real world, for whatever it's worth. Thank you for indulging my comments, I thought it was necessary to say it, I wouldn't say it otherwise, but I can tell you, I enjoy working for each of you. All of you've got a heart, and that's it for me.